Okay, this is the meeting of the planning commission, March 6th, 2014. We have in attendance today Laura Devini, Eric Guillo, Mark Schifert. And my name is Adarbo Simeoni and I'm chairing the meeting in the place of Paul Trales, who is traveling. On our agenda today, we're gonna be discussing the North Sea Road. We have a presentation by ChargePoint and we're gonna announce the meeting, public meeting for the sewer district. We'll start with the North Sea Road. We received a proposal from Chuck Borhees for the preliminary and final zoning study report. I won't go through the, all the items on this report, but I give a brief synopsis of what it includes. There's a, goes in phases. The first phase is a preliminary and final zoning study report. First task is field inventory, basically identifies what is there now, including assessing the possibility of widening the road and any issues that need to be considered. So it's basically just seeing what's available. The second task will be mapping. As the subject matter suggests, prepare an aerial map that identifies lots, the uses, the ownership, footprints, and how the area would be affected by a widened road, one of the possibilities for making the area accessible for retail. Task three is literature. So it'd be a collection and review of the tax map, the zoning code, comprehensive plan, retail market analyses, codes of similar communities, any other pertinent literature that needs to be reviewed. The first, fourth task will be an analysis and consideration. This task looks to take into consideration all and any elements that need to be reviewed, such as inputs from village officials, the attorney, the public, physical elements such as curb cuts, road geometry, parking, existing facilities, alternatives, et cetera, et cetera. So anything that we should take into consideration in looking at the zoning of this area. Then the fifth task will be preliminary recommendations, which is a report that summarizes the tasks one through four with a list of recommendations. Task six is input in meetings. At this point, it comes back for us, to us for evaluation involving the village representatives and the public for public meetings. Task seven will be a final report. And the second phase will be the actual implementation of this. So task eight is implementation assistance, the drafting of the zoning code amendments and amended zoning map. And phase three will be a secret compliance phase in order to see if there's any negative impact. And task nine is environmental review to determine if there would be any negative impacts with a final product for adoption and approval. So that's what we're sending, we recommend to send to the board of trustees for their approval so that we can start the process. Oh, you have any comments on this?
Not at the moment, Edward. Thank you very much. Appreciate your efforts continuing. Thank you.
Good. The second part of the meeting is a presentation by ChargePoint. ChargePoint is a firm that supplies charge stations for electric vehicles. I think it's a very interesting presentation, which will allow the area to develop the electric vehicles, which is also very much environmentally friendly. The gentleman who is presenting this is Mr...
It's there somewhere.
I have it here somewhere. Andy Ballmouth, Regional Sales Director for ChargePoint.
Very good. Thank you very much. And probably do keep out of the way. I'm gonna sit down if that's okay?
Fine, you're good.
Sure. What I've been asked to give quite a presentation, but to focus it more on the educational side, to express what's being done in other areas of the state, other areas of the country, other municipalities, and the private sector as well. The need to, and who our company is obviously, where, where do we get the knowledge to be relaying this? So I'm just gonna move ahead here. Okay. And by the way, this is a hybrid sales and educational session, so I'll be passing through some slides that I may feel that are more sales focused. Right now presently, our company and why we have the experience we have, we're pretty much the first company out there that commercialized putting stations on the marketplace. We've, over a couple of days ago, we reached over 16,000 stations installed throughout the United States. And we presently have about a 70% market share, and if you want to relate that to other vendors in their space, Apple has about that percentage of market share when it comes to downloadable music. And Google has a little bit less than that market share when it comes to search engines. So we are the dominant player in this space, and there's a reason why we'll be getting that. We're venture funded. We have a series of typical VCs. You may recognize some of their names, but if you look at the bottom two, Toyota and BMW are also some of our investors. And BMW is rolling out their new I3 next quarter here in the United States. And we just rolled out our charging stations to about 300 BMW dealers across the United States. We've been shipping since 2008. We have 160,000 employees. To use our stations, you can use an RFID credit card. You can use any credit card and call a toll-free number, or you can use what's called a ChargePoint card. It's an RFID tag. We supply them to EV drivers. We also have them private labeled for various manufacturers. This is for the Nissan Leaf, and I'll show you some more examples of that. But these are now being put in the glove compartments of these EVs as they're being purchased. So we have a very tight relationship with the original equipment manufacturers. Sometimes that could be very bad. Okay, I think I touched upon this. Approximately every 10 seconds, somebody's plugging into one of our charging stations to charge up their electric vehicles. Again, pretty much major market share. List of our clients, I'll make this available by the way, and there's some documentation that has this. In the municipal place, New York City by the way, they have 150 of our stations just for their electric fleets alone. And there's about another 150 stations within New York City that are privately held in parking garages and buildings and so on. And when I, sorry, when I say New York City, all five boroughs. Okay. Where do people charge their cars? First of all, the average range of an electric vehicle is about 70 to 80 miles on electric. A plug-in hybrid, like a Volt, the range is about 30 to 40 miles on electricity, but then they obviously have the gas engine to recharge the batteries, or however it's configured, to go as far as you want. The thing is, when people buy a plug-in hybrid or electric vehicle, they really wanna drive on electricity as much as they can. A, it's clean for the environment, it's ridiculously cheap. It comes out to about 20, 30 cents a gallon, if you wanna equate it to gasoline costs. On the high side, maybe a dollar a gallon, which is still 25% of the cost of what gasoline is. So there's a real driving factor. And, and they do, mostly they're charging at home. They'll have what's called a Level 1 charger. It typically comes with the vehicle. It plugs into the 110 outlet on the wall, and it could take anywhere from about five to 18 hours to charge this car. So the concept is, somebody commutes home, they plug in when they get home, and they're ready to go to work the next day, they should be topped off. For people that want faster charging, there's something called a Level 2 charger. That uses a 208 or 240. In a home, it would be the same type of circuit they would use for an electric range or, or a dryer. So, and, and that could charge those same cars in a two to four hour period, depending on how low they are and whatever. Then, and I'll touch on this some more. So that's where they do the bulk of their charging. The next logical place where they're doing their charging is a cross between what we call public, which municipalities would be, side of the road or whatever, and the workplace. And, so where people go to work every day. They commute to their office, their company will supply charging stations. Probably our largest customer, customer right now is Google. They have over 500 charging stations for their employees, which means they can charge 1,000 cars simultaneously, and they don't have enough stations. We were talking before the meeting, there's something happening in the, in the San Francisco Bay Area right now that's called charging rage, just like we have road rage. But there, there's not enough chargers for charging the car. People go to their place of work, they wanna be able to charge so they can get home, and there's not enough chargers. So it's causing a conflict in certain areas. We won't have those problems for years, hopefully. And then there could be private charges out on the road for fleets or whatever. But, but the bulk of places where people charge their cars are either at home, their workplace, or public environment. Let me just go through this to put it all down. There's lots of reasons why corporations, and it's usually considered a benefit to their employees. Most corporations charge a fee for the use of the electricity to their employees. It's typically the cost of the electricity itself, as they wanna promote it as a benefit, they're not looking for it to be a profit center. For those companies that don't charge it, they'll typically 1099 their employees for the use of the electricity. So there's a lot of flexibility with an intelligent charging station of, A, do you wanna even charge them? How much do you wanna charge them? I mentioned earlier that you may wanna, we recommend that you charge a fee for charging. Obviously, there's the cost of the station and, and electricity. But maybe village residents pay a certain price, and, and guests of the village pay a different price, and employees of the village pay another price. This is totally flexible and can be changed anytime via web portal. We have various partnerships, as I mentioned before, I'm gonna move past that. We do have an app, and this is another thing that's drawing people, and this is the conversation we had up in New Poles, that there's very few charging stations around their area, and by the way, there's even less around this area. But if somebody's driving down the New York State thruway or something like that, the app will tell them that there's charging stations at these locations. It will also tell them if the charging stations are occupied, how long they've been there for. If they allow reservations, they can make a reservations for it. So, so not only do we have an app, but it's, we're now, this happens to be in the dashboard of a Nissan Leaf, where our, our stations are now populated in the dashboards of Nissans, BMWs, Fiat's, and so on. So they can either use the app or their onboard electronics to find our stations. That's just our program. This is the various different front ends from different cars of how they would find our stations. As I mentioned, we create tags for various different manufacturers. Okay. Last year, there was a dramatic jump in the number of EVs. New York State has approximately 5,400 EVs. Okay? Now, that doesn't sound like a lot, but we were third in the country. And if things keep on going the way they're going, we'll probably be second. California's first, and it'll always be first. There was about 170,000 total EVs by the end of 2013. It pretty much doubled. In New York State, I think it went up to about 103 or 104%.
What about hybrids?
Well, I'm sorry. That's a combination of pure electric and plug-in hybrids. Okay, so that's a combination of the both. And I do have stats, if you want individual stats. For example, I live in Huntington. I saw there were 10 Teslas. I have actual make and models by zip codes. So if you're interested in getting that data, I can supply by whatever zip code you supply me, which models you already have here. I'm just gonna move past some of this. Okay, so depending on the type of car, it's at no more than 25% of the cost of gasoline. So it's a substantive change. We have a gal in our office that has put over 20,000 miles on her Volt, and she used about 40 gallons of gasoline. At all, outside of that 40 gallons, everything was done with pure electricity. Even in Long Island, which, and we have probably the highest electric rates in the country. I used to complain about Lipe, right now it's PSENG. But our electric rates are typically the highest, and even with Long Island rates, there's a substantive change, savings with electricity. Okay. I'm just gonna move ahead. Okay. These are some interesting statistics. In New York State, there was approximately 5,300 EVs at the end, and this was at the end of Q3 of 2013. We get our stats usually a couple of months after we... These are the registered vehicles. There's also a lot of vehicles that are not on this list because they may have been, the dealer may have issued plates and it didn't go through the DMV yet. So this is what the DMV thinks. And if you look at it, Suffolk County is the number one county in New York State for EVs. Nassau County is second. And the reason for that is the Long Island Expressway and the HOV lane. Because you have a plug-in hybrid or an electric vehicle, you can use the HOV lane with a single person in the car. They give you the stickers on it. So people are buying, out here, people are buying EVs for probably all the wrong reasons, but they wanna get where they wanna get and use the HOV lane. So we have this tremendous amount of population. In comparison, if you go down, and I'm not even gonna try to pronounce it, but that's basically Syracuse, where there's 176 EVs in, in the area, in the county that's really Syracuse. Is that one county? They have 70 public charging stations, most of them run by the city. So if you look at that ratio, it's, it's like almost two to one, or a little bit more than two to one. But if you look at our county, it's like almost 10 to one. Because we only have about 100 public charging stations here, and most, just about all of them are east of Riverhead. There's a whole bunch on the south shore that was put in by a NYSERDA grant through National Grid. NYSERDA has put in a lot of seeding of grants and putting in stations where New York's tax dollars are paid for that. As I mentioned earlier before the meeting started, right now in Long Island, there's a grant for multi-dwelling units, or apartments, or condos, or co-ops. Typically, any place that has more than maybe eight or 10 residences are considered a multi- dwelling unit. So, NYSERDA has seeded a lot of areas, but once you get out to the forks of Long Island, there's nothing. I think there's two public. Now, there's probably, there's, there's probably a bunch that are not on the maps, that station owners have the option of putting them on the maps or not. So maybe there's a half a dozen on the South Fork. And if you think of all the possible cars that are either here now or could be here, it's, it's really a matter of needing the stations to get them to come out of here. Okay. So there's, as I mentioned before, there's three different basic types of charging protocols. One, you plug in the wall, it's called Level 1. Level 2 is similar to this station here. It runs off a 240, typically three to four hours to charge a car. And Level 3 is very, very expensive. These are typically on highways. If you're familiar with the Teslas, they call them superchargers. And they can typically charge a car in about 20 minutes or so. And there's different types of plug. This plug right here is a standard plug for all cars sold in the United States. It's called a J1772. So this will fit on any car on the highway. Any car that's sold in the United States that doesn't have this plug will have an adapter for this. So this simulates the car itself, and basically it just plugs in like this and it starts charging. Now, in our particular system, in our particular system, it will then send me a text message, if I have a smartphone, tell me that charging has initiated, will tell me how much... People that have electric cars like the data. Their dashboards tell them how much electricity they have, how much they're using, they can program whether they're gonna, on a hybrid, whether they're gonna use gas or electric, and combination thereof. And as this comes down in charging, where it's charging less and less and less, because it's topping off, it'll start notifying the user more and more that maybe you wanna think about coming off the station. Okay, so that's the plug. I'm gonna go right to municipalities. There's a lot of reasons for it. A, it obviously to satisfy your, your residents. You know, are there electric vehicles? Are they asking for it? These are questions I can't answer, by the way. Only you, you can answer it. And maybe the village takes a survey. Maybe there are people who are looking to get electric vehicles, but they're concerned that they may not have places to charge it. Very, very frequent in destination municipalities, which I consider you guys to be one of them, the drawing people into the village as opposed to them going someplace else. If they have an EV, they're gonna go where a charging station is. If anything, just for the uniqueness of being able to plug in their car, believe it or not, it's still a culty thing. We actually have a video display in a lot of municipalities. Different businesses within the municipalities will make 20, 30, you can get 60-second videos and you can change them at any time. So you can plug in, let's say, in front of here, and maybe the hardware store down the street has a little video to remind the people that if they need some hardware, they can go down the street, there's a hardware store. So there's lots of ways that can be played out. But the bottom line is, people, if they have an electronic, electric vehicle, they're gonna look on their apps, they're gonna look to see where charging stations are, and if they're gonna take a Saturday or Sunday drive out to do some, some window shopping, they're gonna go to a place where there's chargers, as opposed to a place that there isn't chargers. One of our clients is Target, and when people plug into an electric, a charging station at one of our stations at Target, they spend approximately 50 more minutes in the Target store. And at Target, each minute equals to about a buck. And, so they don't charge for charging whatsoever. They give two hours for free. And after two hours, they charge what we call predatory rates, where they charge $10 an hour, because they figure nobody's gonna stay in a charge, Target store for more than two hours. And after two hours, let somebody else have a shot at the charging station. So there, there's a lot of ways the fees for charging can be controlled either by users, type of users, time of day, buying habits. If you're a frequent buyer of a store, maybe you don't pay anything for electricity, but if you're not a frequent buyer, you pay whatever the going rate is. So there's a lot of flexibility if you are going to charge a fee on how these fees can What I'd like to do is open up the floor to some questions before I move on, because some of the other stuff is, is gonna be a little bit more salesy too.
Question on my mind is, I think the concept is very interesting, even for a municipality to draw people into the village, but as far as the local residents, how would it be beneficial since they can plug in overnight? And if they're not driving far from home, just coming into the village, maybe five minutes distance, ten minutes distance?
You're 100% correct. However, if they're just plugging into a 110 at night, they're not gonna charge too quickly. Whereas if there's Level 2s in the village, now, this could work against you too. They'll prefer going to a Level 2 station, even paying whatever the rate is, as opposed to doing a Level 1 station at home, because of the length of time. So they'll run into the village, grab some pizza, or whatever, and charge their car.
But they leave it overnight.
Well, if they leave it overnight, that, that could be an issue for the village, and if you...
No, no, I mean overnight at home.
If they do, yes, but still, depending on the type of car they have, they still may not get a complete charge. So, that in itself may not be, for people, for people that have a charging station in their house, that may not be as much of a draw by you having it in the village itself. However, and I know we have an electric vehicle driver in the room, sometimes people like to just go to places where there're charging stations. Again, look at it as a cult thing, or whatever. They like to get out and they like to plug in their car. Matter of fact, there's a new Cadillac ad right now where the guy's making a point of unplugging his car. The draw, also, residents of the village, you would assume that they'd be going into the village one way or the other, as opposed to drawing in tourists into the... Now, you, the village may not want more tour, you know, I don't know what the village's model, as far as in the summer, do you look forward to the tourist traffic or not? One would assume you would. There are some villages that, that don't. So that's why I asked the question. But that in itself can be a very strong draw.
Who decides the electric rate? Is it decided by PSENG or...
It's decided, you guys own the station. And New York's, the New York Public Service Commission, I think it was in December, changed the laws for, the rules for New York State. Up until then, you couldn't charge by the kilowatt in New York State. New York State became the 11th state that allows charging by the kilowatt. So the owner of the station, for example, there's a lot of stations in New York City that we charge what we call predatory rates. Because they'll come in and they'll put a charger into a location at no cost. Sounds pretty good. We call it the vending machine model. And, but they keep all the revenue. You have to use their stations usually for five or seven years, and they charge whatever they wanna charge. And if you think about it, they have to recover the cost of the equipment, you know, they, they typically will reimburse the property owner electricity costs, but they, in order for them to, that business model to be profitable, they have to charge substantial rates. So typically, with our model, and all of our 16,000 stations that are out on the field are owned by the property owners, whether it's a city, or a company, or an individual, they establish what the rates are going to be.
Okay, so that's, and that's really the granting thing then? That's where the grant would be beneficial to offset the cost of this...
Well, yeah. Up until mid of last year, there were actually grants from municipalities. We just installed 12 stations for the city of Rochester, that they put in all their public facilities. They got via a New York State grant, and also a federal grant. There may be other rounds of this. Governor Como has put up a $50 million bucket to be distributed to, for the growth of an infrastructure. Right now, they, they hit the, we call munis, the municipalities, and now they're doing workplace. One of our, have you heard of a company in Melville called Levitin? They're a very big electric manufacturer. They make most of the light switches in this room and whatever. They have a grant for, for the state for a million dollars for what's called workplace. It's for people, where employees park their cars, where they're going to work. So there are grants regularly, but the bulk of the stations out there are actually purchased.
The only drawback I see is not having a man to station. So in other words, you plug in your car, you go to work, but if you don't have a smartphone that's gonna beep at you and tell you to go unplug...
Right.
You know, then you're holding up a line, so to speak.
Yep. So what do you do about that?
Well, I mean, there's, you can hire somebody.
Oh, no, no. There's a couple of ways of handling. First of all, that, our system's been designed, the way we handle it, there's a toll-free number. Now, this is, this is in case somebody's having an issue with the station. I'll get to your point in a second. So if somebody's having an issue with the station, won't initiate, or whatever, the owner, facility manager, towns, highway supervisor, or whatever, doesn't have to be involved with the station. We can do anything with the, the station remotely. And by the way, it connects via cellular conductivity, both either AT&amp;T or Verizon. With the exception, we have lost a lot of, a lot of units this year because snowplows hitting them. We call it death by snowplow. But outside of that, they pretty much have a 10-year lifespan. But to your point, and that's where a matter, that's where your pricing model, if somebody is hogging the station, you can set rules that the costing... I'll send you a little, in Atlanta, somebody just sent me a, an image of a sign, sort of like a handicap sign, we have EV parking signs, and it says, "After four hours, you'll be charged $20 an hour for leaving your car here." So you can bet for $20 an hour, they're gonna probably move their car after four hours. So there's lots of enforcement rules. If you have an environment, a lot of universities where they have an environment where they do a lot of parking enforcement, they, just like they would enforce handicap parking, they would enforce this parking. Especially if a non, typically EV spots, in order to have the most cost-effective install, you needed close to a source of electricity, which typically means close to a building or whatever. So the spots in a parking lot are usually attractive spots for people to park in, just like handicaps are. So often, people will park in these spots without electric cars. So then it's an enforcement process, just like anything you would do, you know, in a municipality or a parking garage. So there are a lot of methods that have been developed over the last five or six years to deal with that. One of the reasons, even if you're not gonna charge for charging, for them to invoke it with either a credit card, or, this is similar to EZPass.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Yeah, that's attached to their credit card. So just like EZPass will take $25 if they don't use any electricity whatsoever, it sits there forever. And companies where they're not charging the employees at all, we don't put anything in the money bucket, but then if they go to a public station, they can't use that card. So typically, they'll put a $25 in the bucket, but then, if they're hogging the station, we have the ability to enforce whatever rules you enforce.
I can see how it'd be beneficial on the parking garage situation, and then it, then it could be done by an attendant. I mean, you could ask to have it done.
Yeah, in, in some cases valet, we typically will, well, it, it depends on the type of facility, but yes, they'll typically be behind the valet area. I was just down at Water Street yesterday in Manhattan, and they lost a couple of these because of Hurricane Sandy. I mean, five stories of parking garages that flooded. And they had a couple in what they would consider the public area, but the ones that they're replacing because of the water damage is, they're all gonna be in a valet area. So they can get better utilization.
Yeah.
And yet, we have five stations at LaGuardia, and we have five stations at Kennedy. They have pretty high utilization. LaGuardia's building a new parking garage that may be done this summer, maybe next summer, who knows? But they're putting in 21 new stations there. Not valet.
No, yeah, okay.
Are there any other municipalities in New York that...
To my knowledge, no. There's a lot of government entities, for example, SUNY Stony Brook, they have about a dozen of, of stations. They got four on grant, and then they bought the rest to spread out, you know, through the campus in front of dorms. There's, if you look at our, our application, there's one there that says for president's use only, he drives an electric car. So, but I don't believe right now they're, I'll look into that. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, the town of Babylon.
Town of Babylon.
Yeah, the town of Babylon, I'm sorry, has dozens of them, but they got most of them via grant.
The town of Babylon?
Yeah, National Grid. Any more, Fred?
There was at Babylon, it's at all their parks.
Yeah, there's some even on the barrier island.
Yeah, the fire island there.
Yeah.
So typical use, obviously not gas stations, it'll be stores where people can park for a long-term, municipality... for a long-term, municipalities if they wanna service the public or draw, draw the public in for shopping and whatnot.
The mentality of an EV driver, whereas the mentality of a gasoline driver is gasoline driver is like, on my way out here, I stopped off for gas, I got 27 gallons of gas. I only have like a 28 gallon tank. So that's the mentality of a gasoline driver. Whereas a electric vehicle driver, they top off all the time. So even if they just drove a couple of miles, their mentality is, they wanna plug in at every opportunity. And by the way, Fred, chime in because you are an EV driver.
Oh, absolutely. If there's a Starbucks in the village here, for instance, I'd go in there, maybe spend half an hour, have a coffee, you know.
Just to top, just to top it off. So the mindset is any place, somebody's gonna spend a minimum of 20 minutes to an, to an hour at the minimum, movie theaters, destination golf clubs, you know, there's a lot of places where if people are gonna hang for a minimum amount of time, if it's a high volume area, you don't want them hanging too long because they want somebody else to come along and be able to use the station. EV drivers are typically very courteous, even for New Yorkers, typically very courteous, that, that when they're done and if they're done with their business, they're just not gonna sit there to look cool or anything, they'll typically move on. So the mindset is any place that, Panera's, you know, we installed some at Dunkin' Donuts and I'm saying, who the heck would be staying at Dunkin' Donuts for, you know, 20, 30 minutes? But you know what? There are some Dunkin' Donuts that have Wi-Fi's. They're starting to compete with Starbucks and whatever. So that's one of the draws. We even have a couple McDonald's that have them. And it's very difficult to become an authorized McDonald's vendor. That took us like two years. So it could really be anywhere, but there are some areas that are far more practical than others.
What's your experience with vandalism? Because for example, public phones was always a big problem. Do these have a problem?
Obviously, there's a possibility of that. The way we design, this is our third generation unit, we put the LCD behind, this can be shattered if you whack it with a baseball bat, but it's not gonna affect the screen behind it. It will shatter but not crack completely, sorry about that. All our buttons can be used with gloves on, you know, so there may be some things out there with touchscreens. Well, we know how cold it's been lately. Probably, it would have to be such hardcore vandalism that they can cut this with a pair of bolt cutters or something and obviously that's an issue. There's no salvageable copper in here. You know, in some areas of the country, they'll grab anything that has a wire because they'll try to salvage copper out of it. By the way, this is typically 18 feet long. This is only a demo. And there's usually a, a stanchion over here and it's gravity loaded, so it never touches the ground. So as you go walk to your car with it, it just reels out and as you go walk back to the station, it reels back in. The advantage to that is a lot of the units out there have drums that you wrap it on or they wind up on the floor. Then you have a damage issue or they're dirty and when you go to plug them into your car, you know, people aren't that happy. Again, we have a lot of experience. We had 7,000 of its, of the Generation Two out there and we probably have six or 7,000 of Generation Three already. And this has only been out since last May. And we have a couple of thousand of Generation One that's out there. So with each generation, they get a little bit better as far as their durability. Designed for 10-year lifespan, again, physical damage, snowplows are the number one killer.
Otherwise, you really haven't had problems with vandalism per se?
You know, I don't wanna pick on the South Bronx, but I guess there could be areas that could be prone to that. I, it, my geographic areas of New York, New Jersey and Connecticut, I handle those three states. I have yet to be called on a vandalism issue. I have been called on, somebody forgot to unplug it, just like a gas station. No, there are lots, lots of things. But the, the number one issue we're having this time of the year has been snowplows anyway. Typically, if they're gonna be in front of like a curbstone or something like that, you would need to have ballards in front of it to protect it. But outside of that, they're really durable. They're really durable.
How much do they cost?
As much as we can get. None of them.
At least five, $6,000.
Yeah.
But then that does not include installation of it.
That, that's correct. And often installation costs could outweigh the cost of the station themselves. We do have a, via Key Bank, a financing program for municipalities that has some unique features to it. Knowing that municipalities, the interest rate is very competitive. Matter of fact, the interest rate is better than the interest rate for private sector. But one of the neat things about it is knowing that municipalities may not have funding for annually, there is a clause in the municipality agreement that if X years down the road, the town doesn't have the appropriate funding to continue with it, you basically have an ability to get, get out of the financing.
So you rent the machine in other words?
Well, it's yours at the end of the period. Okay, so it, for lack of a better term, call it a lease.
Okay.
Where it's yours at the end of the term. So instead of, and they'll also do the installation costs. So instead of outlaying any type of capital at all, it typically runs, I'm just using a representative number, about $200 a month per station.
You do the billing?
Well, we act very similar to a credit card company. So if you guys are charging for fees, you program what the fees would be, we collect the billing, we collect, we keep 10% of it for processing because we process it through a credit card company. We're PCI compliant, by the way, and you get everything else.
You send a check to them?
We usually just do drafts, you know, right to your bank. I mean, that's typically just...
And how's, and how does P S E N G charge for the electricity? They charge...
Well, it depends.
It's connected to, let's say...
Your source.
Your building. So any, any retail store, let's say on Jobs Lane, Main Street, could have this unit in the back on the, in the parking area, connected to their store.
Right, to their meter.
To their meter. And then you kind of resell the power. Or if you shop at that store, you can save, you get it for free.
But, but a municipality...
Well, in, in our case, I mean, if we were, if the municipality were to install it, let's say in the parking areas in the back, we then connect those stations to our...
Power source.
Our power source.
Whether it's this building...
You still have to decide what, if they're gonna charge, what they're gonna charge and each person gets their little card.
Yeah.
And that's programmed.
And there's a high probability that if they have an electric car already, they have a card. For example, Fred and I just met, I don't know, a couple of months ago maybe, and you had a charge point card already.
That's right.
Because he drives an electric vehicle and it's very common for somebody with an electric vehicle to have a charging card. So, so the power comes from wherever the owner of the property and the station decides.
Okay. I was just thinking municipalities, you know, maybe they don't have a building, maybe they just have a parking lot. So where, so they have to tap into something. They have to...
Have to run the wires.
Yeah, they have to dig into something.
Right.
That's the part of the installation.
Is that called installation?
Yes. So basically installation, the actual, to install the unit itself takes an hour or two. It's very, very quick. The, the thing that takes time is running the power to wherever you want this to sit.
Right.
So for example, if you wanted one in front of the village hall over here, you would have to trench underneath the sidewalk, fix the sidewalk, put it there with maybe some protection or whatever. And so you would have that cost of doing whatever you did to the sidewalk and you would tap off of the building. Now, you don't need a separate meter for that because the unit itself acts as a meter. Matter of fact, it's a very sophisticated meter.
Or in the back of the building here, where we have our main service coming in.
Oh, then it, then it's very, relatively, it's very inexpensive. I've seen installs literally in the hundreds of dollars because they used a wall-mounted unit against the wall and the panel was on the other side. So they literally just had to run the wires through the wall. And we've had some install, we had one install in Hawaii that was $70,000 because some hotel wanted it through some lava rock or some weird stuff. But we did a bank in Westchester where they wanted it in the middle of the parking lot. So they had a trench all the way to the middle of the parking lot to run the power there. And that's very, very costly.
Yeah.
Whereas if they put it next to the building, they would've saved many, many thousands of dollars, but that's where they wanted it.
Right.
You don't get involved with the, with the grants or anything, right?
We can help you with grants. Matter of fact, we've helped quite a few people write their grants. It's, and, and we deal very, very often with NYSERDA because we're helping them complete a lot of grants that are going on right now. So we deal with them on a regular basis. They're, they're constantly putting things out, but they go in cycles. So I don't know when the next round would be quote, a muni round as opposed to, right now there's a workplace and an N D U round. You know, it may be six months, it could be two or three years. But I'll be more than happy to look into it in my own best, best interests that if you were able to find a grant and if you decided that our stations would fit the need as opposed to others.
Bottom line for a municipality, what's the incentive to put these in?
Well, to supply a service to your residents, to draw people to the municipality. I don't know what, is there many green efforts within the village? But the data that we collect to support the green efforts are outstanding. And a lot of companies have pushed themselves over the edge for lead certification. This was like the last thing that really got them over the edge. So there are a lot of compelling things and there is one of those flyers in, in the orange binders that are focused just on municipalities. We can also arrange for you to call and interact with other municipalities and ask them what was their deciding factor. The founder of our company used to be the mayor of a town called Cupertino, California. That would be the town where Apple is. But, so he's very, very focused on the municipality marketplace and we've done quite well in the municipality marketplace because he obviously understands it. So we can, we can assist you along those lines.
How do you go about educating, let's say, business owners if they're interested in putting one of these near their location to attract customers?
Well, A, it's supplying with statistics. We can also come and do a presentation if you wanna get together a group of the business owners and just an open forum, not so much as a sales pitch, but more on an educational basis. I think if people get convinced that this is a need, at least take a look at our product and let the product shine on its own. So we use these type of forums more on an educational basis than, than on a product basis. So if you wanted to get some progressive merchants, I'd be more than happy to present to them.
Now typically in a village, the merchant are small scale, retail stores, things of that nature.
Right.
Hotel owners, hotel owners.
Hotel owners. Well, we don't, yeah, hotel owners, that's true.
Well, and...
We don't have many hotels in here.
And we have the golf clubs.
Golf clubs, that is possible. About retail, all the small retail.
I guess it, businesses that, that where visitor income, we'll just call them visitors as a blanket statement as opposed to tourists or whatever, has a major impact on their business, I think they may be very intrigued because what, what you wanna do is draw people, usually people that drive electric cars of civil, you know, even if they, I'm not talking about their, their monetary value or, or whether they're wealthy or not, if they're driving Teslas, they are. Matter of fact, in my town Huntington, there are 10 Teslas. I probably should do the stats for here, I'm sure there's a bunch out here.
I know, I know of one.
We just put some in, in the, in the Trump Tower in White Plains, there's one resident there that has three Teslas.
Wow.
White Plains has a lot of Teslas. But Tesla, they have a showroom in Garden City. In Syosset, they just built a service facility with one of their battery swapping centers. I don't know if you're familiar with what that is. Very intriguing. Instead of charging the car, you drive over a pit and it pulls one battery out and puts another battery in and you go for another 250 miles. Yeah.
And they're trying to, they're trying to develop a sort of a middle, middle market...
Yes, yes. That was just released, a $35,000, $40,000 car, which is considered middle market.
Right.
Other questions?
Well, we could, businesses could get together, like say behind, you know, the new Citarella and those. I mean, they could, they could do a cooperative type of thing if they wanted.
Sure.
Somebody's gonna have to do the electric, but you know, they could work it out.
Well, whoever supplies the electric obviously could be compensated over and above. You know, if it's a co-op and somebody's supplying one of the resources that everybody else isn't, he gets that right off the top.
Yeah, right. I mean, they work, work something out with contract or whatever.
It's curious, I've been sitting here listening to you looking at the device with the picture in the background here.
Oh, the, is it Atlanta?
No, Southampton's finest.
Oh.
The windmill.
The windmill.
From there to there.
Quite an acronym.
Actually, I was just on Roosevelt Island and they have water turbines in the river powering one of their parking lots. They have three huge...
That's great.
Not, not the East River, there's another river that runs, Roosevelt Island being an island, one side's the East River with Manhattan and on the other side of it, I, I, maybe it's still called the East River, and on the other side of that is Queens.
Still the East River.
It's still the East River. So as the water goes down there, and I've been down there by boat, it is very, very turbulent, especially with, with the change of tide.
The tides go back and forth.
Unbelievable. You can get like 12, 15 footers there sometimes. But they have three huge water turbines.
Yeah.
Powering their...
There's a commercial that shows the same thing, but, and it says, the electricity for this town is supplied by the moon, but it's the tide coming in and the tide going out.
Yes, yes, the tide going in and out, yes.
I don't know how familiar you are with the village of Southampton, but for municipality of this size, what would make sense as far as the number of stations and whatnot? Is there a statistic?
The most important thing to consider, that wherever you think you should have a station, do the forethought of making the conduit big enough for more in the future. I'm not saying even run the wire, okay? But if you're going through the expense of trenching to an area to put a station in, a year down the road, and, and one of the beauties about this, it collects tremendous amount of statistics, you will know whether or not you need new stations because not only will it tell you if it's active and how active it is, but how many different users. If you have the same two people using it all the time that shows 100% activity, you don't need another station.
Right.
But if you have 15 or 20 people that are using it in a very short period of time, you could use a station. We can also tell you what zip codes they're coming from. We're, we're not gonna give you the personal data of the people, but we can tell you whether they're local or they're traveling to get there. So based on that statistics, I usually say, get some reasonable coverage and don't go crazy in the beginning. You know, they typically say 5% in an area that has an EV population. Right now, you don't know what your EV population is.
Right.
So I wouldn't use that statistic at all. If you put, and excuse my ignorance, and I probably should've done a little bit more homework, fortunately I've been busy. So I don't know how large geographically you are, how many stations, how many parking lots you have. You guys probably know that better than I do, but you know, four to eight stations may be populated in good areas of the village for a start. It may make sense to do the lower end, it may make sense to do more, you know, that's something, and I'll be more than happy to walk the various areas of the village to determine, you know, that's a great place, but it may be substantively cheaper if you put it over there type of thing. And then collect the statistics. But again, the most important thing, whether you install one stations or dozens of stations, when you do your planning, you plan for growth in the future because I will tell you, like, if you build it, they will come, they will truly come. And forget about using it as a profit center. And we don't, we don't push that it could be a profit center. You know, I mentioned that on, on a finance basis, it's about $200 a month. It could very easily, especially in the summer months, not cost you anything at all because of all quote the out of towns. In the winter months, maybe it will cost you 50 or 70, that maybe it'll cost you the whole thing, you know, until you get a greater number of EV population. Well, you're an aqua, aquanaut or whatever, do you notice a lot of EVs in the area, Fred?
I, I see probably about two or three a day passing through.
Okay.
Oh, there's something.
Yeah, I'll look up the, the stats. I have, I have my count.
So basically, if there's interest in the municipality, they can just pick two, three good spots, put two or three of these stations and, and see what happens.
It's a testbed, testbed. And the most important thing is that the stations have the intelligence to collect data to see if it's gonna work or not. I was at Norwich, Connecticut, uh, cause Connecticut has a grant program. It's a couple of thousand dollars per station. But, but they don't require the data. Somebody from the nu, the newspaper said, you're giving out all this money, but you're not getting in any statistics to determine if it's working or not. So that's probably the key thing, to be able to have statistics to say, wow, I think I may need more stations, but do I really?
So it's a forty, fifty thousand dollar investment?
Uh, if you're gonna put in five or six stations with, with maintenance and, with, um, install and everything else, yes.
Okay. More questions?
Andy, did you mention the, um, the app for locating the stations?
Yes, but, uh, go for it. Do you find that that's helpful when you're in a jam or something?
Well, if I'm picking like a destination, like say I'm looking for something to do on the weekend, you know, I'll try to pick a destination that has listings that have charging stations for businesses. You know, like sometimes, like for instance, if I'm trying to pick a neighborhood for a hotel, you know, if there's a hotel with a, with a charging station, or like say, I'm gonna do, you know, round of eighteen over the weekend. You know, I'll, I'll go to, you know, visit a country club that has charging facilities.
Sure. So again.
So it's a draw?
Exactly.
It's a, it's a both Android and, and?
Yes, and, and actually, we're having another release in April.
Okay.
And a lot of the cars today will be right on the dash too.
That's cool.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. I'll take about a minute or two to back up here.
Thank you.
And again, I'm relatively local, so if there's any type of backup conversation necessary, by all means.
Right, the only, the only other thing we, uh, we will announce, or we're announcing a public hearing to be set for April third at five PM. It's a presentation by H2M, a consulting and design firm. Uh, the presentation will be by Mr. Nick Bono, Senior Project Engineer, and Frank Russo, Vice President, Director of Water, Wastewater Engineering, uh, which we advertise in local media. And, uh, this is a follow-up to the previous presentation, following the successful implementation of the sewer district in Patchon. And it ties in with the sewer district that we are planning for the village. So, uh, encourage everybody to come to this meeting. Should be very interesting, and, uh, this is a contact that's from Mark. So maybe you have a couple, something you'd like to say about as well?
Well, I would like to just encourage, and we will certainly invite all the business owners within the Village Business District and within the proposed sewer district to also come and attend, and discussion will be held about the need that we have for a wastewater plant and, uh, how much, how important it is, and how it will work, and how it will be funded and so on and so forth.
Are you gonna advertise or something to draw these people?
Yes, and we have to, uh, it's gonna be a public hearing, so we'll have to advertise at three days before. So it's gonna be September the third. Uh, on the next agenda, we're also gonna be discussing building heights. It's been brought to attention that, uh, it's a matter we, we may want to review, although, uh, in my opinion, things, we already have mesh regulation for building heights, but, uh, it's something that will be on the next agenda as well. If there's no further business, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.